I'll call the meeting with the Warren County Commission to order. It's a sad day for Warren County. I want everyone, please take a moment. We lost our former sheriff, Mr. Tommy Myers. So if you would, let's just take a moment to reflect and pray for his family. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Tommy Savage to do the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have with us tonight Brother Jason Gann. He's going to do our invocation. I'll give you a little bit of a biography on Jason. He's a lifetime resident of Warren County. He began teaching and preaching at a young age. Jason is currently the preacher at Campaign.
A prospective citizen of this community. A man who gave many years of his life in service to this community. We pray that you would comfort his family, his wife, children, other family members, and friends for the community. We are told in the Holy Scriptures that you are the God of all comfort. And we pray that you would comfort these hearts as only you can. And we pray for comfort for others as well, that have lost loved ones. We pray for those who are sick, that you would help them to get better. We pray that you would forgive us of our sins, as we forgive those who sin against us. We're so thankful for the Warren County Commission. We're thankful for all 24 members, for the county executive, for the others who serve in the various positions in service to our community. We are told by you that the greatest are those who serve. And we're so thankful for all of these who do this for us. Help us to help them. Help us to be an encouragement to them, to assist them, and to help them to fulfill their roles of service. And we pray that as they make decisions, that they will make those decisions that are in accordance with your word, and those decisions that are going to most benefit our community. Heavenly Father, we pray that you would help us to always live for you. Help us to add to our faith virtue, and to virtue knowledge, and to knowledge temperance, and to temperance patience, and to patience godliness, and to godliness brotherly kindness, and to brotherly kindness love. Help us to do these things so that we can be found faithful in the end. And we pray all of this prayer in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Can I call Mr. Gary Martin?
Thank you. At this time, we have Mr. Rex Rex Crabtree here with us tonight to lead us in our pledge. Let me give you a little history on Mr. Crabtree. Military history. He served eight and a half years in the Army Reserve. Was called up to active duty on the two separate deployments. Once during 2003, he was deployed to Fort Benning, Georgia for nine months. Next, he was deployed to Iraq from July 4th to July 2005. Rex is currently in his 23rd year as an educator. Nineteen years teaching, seventh, eighth grade, soft studies, and four years as principal at Eastside Elementary. We're proud to have Mr. Crabtree here tonight to lead our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Rex Crabtree.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's mark it on the road. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. All right, we have one more person tonight. We're going to move on to item number five, the adoption of our docket.
Please adopt.
We got a motion, Mr. Reddick, and a second, Mr. Pines. Any additions to corrections to the document?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if we don't hear it, please, can we move on announcements? We've got a proclamation from Warren County Middle School Dance Team. Can we put them on right after the radio minutes, 6:08? That way, these girls need to go, they can't.
All right, we've got to take that form of motion. All right, I have a second. A second question, staff. All those in favor of moving that, say aye.
Aye.
All those puffed, passage unanimously. Now, we're back on our original docket. All those in favor of approving our docket tonight, say aye.
Aye.
All those puffed, passage unanimously. We will move on to the radio minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion. We have seven minutes. That is written. Let's suspend the radio.
All right, we got a motion. We got a second for Mr. Halt. Any additional corrections we met? If not, all those in favor of approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those puffed, passage unanimously. I did want to announce, Mr. Randy England, he's got Avery Mullins. We have your own very interested politics and learning about county government sitting next to him tonight. We'll move into proclamation, please.
Tonight, we're going to recognize the Warren County Middle School Dance Team. I hope that group wants to come up front. This is a special group. They went down to Florida back in February, and basically beat everybody, everybody in the South. So they are national champions, uh, dance team. So we wanted to recognize them for Warren County. It's always good when the young kids do something great to represent our county. So I'll have county executive, Belrika Proclamation, and then we'll take some photos. Good job, Liz.
Our proclamation honoring the Warren County Middle School Dance Team. Whereas the Warren County Middle Dance Team of 2024, 2025 attended the National Dance Alliance Competition in Orlando, Florida on February 14th through 16th, 2025. Whereas the members of the team as follows. Brianna Bates, 8th grade, Warren County Middle School. Rizet Ronaldo, 8th grade, Warren County Middle School. Kara Bonner, 6th grade, Warren County Middle School. Addison Catrill, 8th grade, Dibrel. Mallory Catrill, 8th grade, Warren County Middle School. Jordan Cook, 6th grade, Warren County Middle School. Spencer Daniel, 6th grade, Warren County Middle School. Leah Eubanks, 8th grade, Warren County Middle School. Mella Garcia, 8th grade, Warren County Middle School. Natalie Herron, 8th grade, Eastside. Kinsley Jones, 7th grade, Eastside. Clara Martin, 7th grade, Warren County Middle School. Keely Cunningham, 7th grade, Irving College. Avery Mullins, 6th grade, Warren County Middle School. Kelly Nunley, 7th grade, Eastside. Amelia Parton, 6th grade, Warren County Middle School. And Malaya Taylor, 6th grade, Warren County Middle School. And whereas these students, athletes, through their hard work and dedication, were victorious in the competition and crowned champions. And whereas these efforts are recognized, also felt the coaches Christie, Weider, Jacqueline Butler, Asha Fan, for their guidance and motivation for this team. And therefore, I tell you, Val, county executive, the title of Warren County Legislative Body and the citizens of Warren County, to reflect the pride we have in these young for their championship representation of our county. So do declare April 21st, 25, as a day we all recognize as a Warren County Middle School Dance Team across all of Warren County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, week before, we started our budget review process. We will have a meeting this Thursday at 5:00 PM, and we're going to tackle a lot more budgets, but we've got it going. Should be finished sometime mid next month, but everything's going as planned. Nothing else to report.
Uh, building grounds?
I would think building grounds got to report. The Fuel Island should be up and running in the next few weeks, and the Health Department bid has been awarded. That's all I have at this time.
Economic agriculture?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing that speak on is this past Saturday was the first flying breakfast at the airport. I did not talk with Jim to find out the number of people that was fed, but it was a large crowd.
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred. It was a large crowd. It was a little windy, so they didn't have as many planes flying as they expected. It's the third Saturday of every month. So I think May the 7th is the next one, and the public is welcome to come. It's really a good breakfast for $10, and it goes to their EAA club out there at the airport. And there will be an opportunity for the young people to fly sometime this year, but I don't, I don't know when that is. But be looking for the paper and walk up to know that. Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin, you also have, the commissioners have these from the Agriculture Department on your desk. It's got the Agriculture Facts, uh, Tennessee, that you might want to take a look at. We're bringing pretty high levels of agricultural parks in the state. Now, we'll move on to education.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have nothing to report.
Thank you. Financial management at this time has nothing to report. We'll move on to health and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did pass our budget on to budget finance for review in our last meeting, and if you noticed in the information that was given to you, population standard of 60 to 80 animals. We did allow our free adoption to lapse on the 18th, so we'll look at that again at our next meeting and see if we need to entertain doing that again. That's all I have at this time.
Highway to Bridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About all I've got to report today is we are doing a little paving now, so, but that's about all I got tonight.
Policy personnel, Mr. Chairman.
Policy personnel met April 3rd for a regular monthly meeting we accepted to report from the judicial commissioner and the coast department. Policy personnel met again on April 10th to discuss possible quarry issues on Roy Austin Road. Fifteen residents were allowed to speak, plus two commissioners from the Bay Harbor, DeKalb County, who spoke on the County Powers Act. The committee passed a motion to send the Powers Act resolution and the quarry resolution to the full commission in April 24th. Both of these passed 5-0. Our next regular meeting will be on Thursday, May 1st, at 5:00. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The six, we, of course, I think we've got all of our budgets together for Scott, but we also addressed a refurbishing and rebuilding of our EMS program, and we chose Jason Gillis to help guide that for this next year, and hopefully we can get more modern and better communications and, and to help Warren County. Thank you.
Correctional, county correctional partnership, Mr. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we have 242 inmates, 195 men, 45, 47 females, and 12 TDLC, and two has gotten parole violations. I'd just like to bring note that that 242 is well under what we've been running, about around the 260 mark, so I'm thankful to see Sheriff Dean, and I seen Kevin, some of them out here. Appreciate the good job they're doing out there, keep that below the 250 mark. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Randy, you should talk a little about that certification that you just received at the jail.
That is right. Yes, sir. We did get certified at the jail. They came and walked through our jail, certified us, and we passed it with flying colors. We're good for another year, and so we're very, very proud of that. Thank you, Mr. Gary, for coming in.
We'll move on to legislative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
All right, you'll bring to the paper all the public comment.
Before we move along further, I was interested to know, uh, what's the name of the company that got the deal with the field department, and how much does that cost?
Morris, Morris Fowler, Morris Fowler, that's who got the deal. Morris Fowler. But I, and that's my preference.
All right, before we start public comment, the first thing we have on our thing, I know that this is a really controversial thing, and I know tempers, and everybody's very passionate about, about this going on, but we're going to have a civilized meeting, and so we don't want no outburst or anything, so please, everybody has their own, so let's be civil about it, have a debate about it, and we'll start with that. Mr. Larry Rainborn is the first one to speak for the Powers Act to regulate rock quarries. You have three minutes.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Larry Rainborn. I've lived in this county for most of my life. I'm speaking today on behalf of my neighbors, parents, veterans, seniors, and working families, the people who built their lives here and just want to protect what we have. We deeply concerned about the possibility of a quarry moving into our community. This isn't just about noise it does, it's about our health, our homes, and our way of life. Many of us are on fixed incomes. We don't have the means to move if our property loses value or our water becomes polluted. We just want to feel safe in our homes. If the County Power Act isn't passed, we won't have a way to stop this. There's no other legal mechanism to block a quarry once the land is sold, unless it is directly polluted water, even the state can intervene for us. This act is the only line of defense we have. Our other counties, Grundy, Cav, and Canny, have already adopted the act to keep quarries out. If Warren County doesn't follow suit, we'll become the easy target, the only place left without protection. We don't want to be the dumping ground for what other communities have already rejected. We don't want to leave the door wide open. This act doesn't ban businesses. It simply sets limits on quarries, nothing else, and that protects people. The state gave counties the power for a reason. This isn't government outreach, it's government stepping in to protect its citizens like it should. We're asking you on behalf of our neighbors, our elders, our veterans, and our kids, to use the authority you've been given. Think about what's good for all. Yeah, protect Dibrel, but protect Warren County also. Please don't leave our county wide open to abuse. Please vote yes for this action. If it all goes awry, you have the power to repeal it all. What has the county got to lose by taking action? If you fail to take action, we all lose. They can recover. We can't. Thank for listening to me.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Holler Simmons. He's speaking for the County Powers Act to allow rock quarries to, against rock quarries.
Good evening, my name is Holler Simmons, and I'm here speaking on behalf of my community. If nothing else is gained, at minimum, I've seen a community come together like never before. Thank you all for being here tonight. I know this is a difficult decision, but I appreciate you coming to vote. This could be the most consequential vote this commission will have to decide. The decision around this will ultimately change the future of Warren County one way or another. We have presented you with the many facts about the dangers and concerns of quarries being in residential areas, so rather than talk about quarries or County Powers Act, I would like to do something our founding fathers did much more than we do nowadays before big decisions. I would like to pray, because our God is bigger than our enemies. Please bow with me. Lord God, we come before you this evening and ask that you join us in this place. Lord, we pray for these commissioners and their families we have elected to represent our communities, for they have difficult decisions for them. Lord, give them wisdom in their decision and peace in their hearts. Lord, we pray for Warren County as a whole. May your mighty name bring peace and restoration where this topic has brought so much division. We pray for the future of Warren County. May we be blessed and protected. Lord, we pray our citizens will love one another the way you love each of us. And Lord, we pray for all the residents that will be directly impacted, the ones that may have to move and the ones that may have to stay and suffer. Lord, we pray, no matter what happens here tonight, you have us all in the palm of your hand, and will God protect us in the days ahead. We place our trust in you alone, Lord. Finally, Lord, we ask that fear from both sides be gone, because fear is not from you. For God has given us a spirit of fear, has not given us a spirit of fear, but a power For God has given us a spirit of fear, has not given us a spirit of fear, but a power, love and a sound mind. Lord, we just ask that your will be done. Our Father who art in heaven, how will be thy name? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our new business, resolution number one. Mr. Kenny Moss.
Good evening. Uh, I'm going to be introducing the County Powers Act. I'm going to be reading it for everyone to, to hear. So it says, "The resolution authorizing Warren County to exercise certain powers granted to municipalities under TCA Code six dash two dash two oh one and twenty-two and twenty-three with respect to the regulation of nuisances and other practices detrimental to the inhabitants of the county. Whereas, general public in passing, chapter six hundred and twenty-seven of the Public Acts of two thousand and two to chapter fifty-seven of the Public Acts of two thousand and three, amended TCA Code five dash one dash one eighteen to expand the ability of counties to exercise certain municipal powers in relation to the regulation of nuisances, nuisances and other practices detrimental to the inhabitants of the county as outlined in TCA Code six dash two dash two oh one, twenty-two and twenty-three. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Warren County has determined that it would be beneficial to the inhabitants of the county for Warren County to adopt these regulatory authorities for the purposes of regulations of rock quarry, rock crushing and mining. Whereas, nothing in this shall be construed as granting Warren County the power to prohibit or regulate normal agricultural activities according to TCA Code five dash one dash one eighteen, section B. Whereas, TCA Code five dash one dash one eighteen C requires that any county desiring to exercise these powers must adopt a resolution by two-thirds vote of its legislative body in order to do so and must subsequently adopt any such regulation also by two-thirds majority. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this twenty-first day of April two thousand and twenty-five, section one. Pursuant to the directives of TCA Code five dash one dash one eighteen C, the Board of County Commissioners of Warren County, Tennessee hereby express its intent that the county be authorized to exercise those powers granted to municipalities under TCA Code six dash two dash two oh one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Such powers are described by law as the ability to define, prohibit, abate, suppress, prevent and regulate all acts, practices, conduct, businesses, occupations, callings, trades, use of property and other things whatsoever detrimental or liable to be detrimental to the health, morals, comfort, safety, convenience or welfare of the inhabitants of the municipality and exercise general police powers and prescribe limits within which business occupations and practices liable to be nuisances or detrimental to health, morals, security or general welfare of the people may be lawfully established, conducted or maintained. Section two, the exercise of such powers by Warren County shall be in accordance with all limitations provided in TCA Code five dash one dash one eighteen. Such authority shall only be exercised in the unincorporated areas of the county. Such authority shall not apply to those activities, businesses or uses of property and businesses, occupations and practices which are exempted from regulation by TCA Code five dash one dash one eighteen, section C two. Section three, furthermore, the Board of County Commissioners of Warren County recognizes that all court decisions and statutory laws relating to variances and non-conforming uses which are applicable to zoning ordinances and land use controls shall also apply to the enforcement and exercise of powers granted by TCA five dash one dash one eighteen C. Further, the Board of County Commissioners recognizes that the enforcement and exercise of these powers by the county is limited by the provisions of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee and the United States Constitution, section four. Subsequent to the effective date of this resolution, the county is hereafter authorized to adopt regulations in accordance with the authorities granted under TCA Code five dash one dash one eighteen C. In order to be effective, such regulations shall also be passed by two-thirds majority of the Board of County Commissioners of Warren County. Section five, this resolution shall be effective upon its passage and approval, the public welfare requirement.
Michael Ross, we approve.
And I saw.
Uh, I hear a second, obviously, we had a second quick from, uh, Mr. Brown, Mr. Moss and Mr. Brown. Now we'll move into some discussion and there's going to be a lot of discussion.
I'm reading, Mr. Chairman, who you are.
Well, I think a lot of the commissioners have a lot to say and, uh, and there's a lot, of course, this has been really controversial in, in our community. And after this vote's taken, I want you to know all these commissioners, they really struggle with which way to vote on this issue because it's something that, that a lot of the county is actually split on. It's, it's got turned in that it's not about a quarry, it's got turned around that we're taking rights from ordinary people, which is not far from the truth. Right now, we have regulations regulating junkyard and scrap yards. Most of y'all commissioners have come in here, somebody's yard had junk and you want to be the son of a hose man out there cleaning it up. So that's a regulation on somebody's private property. We regulate landfills too. We also have a private act for a landfill, which you can't do a landfill. We regulate trailer parks, we regulate adult entertainment, we regulate beer sales, we regulate subdivisions. All those things are regulated not because we want to tell you what to do with your property, but to protect the residents of Warren County and make it a better place to live. So that's, that's how this has come about and it's something that actually is causing this, that nobody's brought to the table, nobody's said nothing about it. But several years ago, if you put up a farm for sale, they would have been a farmer begging to buy that ground. He would have bought your big farms. But we're losing six point three acres per hour in Tennessee to develop. So we're, that's the reason your farms are selling. The farmers can't make enough money to keep their land in roll. So that's some of the reason we're here tonight to talk about this. And the problems that we're having is you grow. I'm going to ask the court to let me do something a little different because it's going to be hard to keep up with who talked and who did it. And in our rules, it says that you're allowed four minutes to talk. I'm going to start over here with Ron Lee and come around and go down. If you want to speak on this subject, it gives everybody a chance to speak before we go into debate about the thing. Does anybody have objection to that? And if you don't want to say anything, just, just pass it right along. Do you want to start out with Mr. Ron Lee?
I'll pass to Steve.
All right. Michael, if you wouldn't keep the time off.
Thanks. Uh, I, I've lived in Dibro all, all my life, dealt with them. This, what we do tonight is going to be the most important thing we did twenty years ago. We've had nothing brought up the last thirty years to stop what we're going to do now. Oh, okay. And, uh, this is, what's your weight notes? It makes it, anyway. So we need to think about people. I hear all the time, you know, well, we concerned about, we're sorry. Well, we all do, but it's, it's not in your back door. If it was in your back door, backyard, y'all would be, uh, want us to do something. So that's what we're trying to do. These people over here, they've got a big challenge ahead of them. There's seventy-seven or more in that little area there. If you ain't been out there, it's too late to go down, but you should have went and looked at the road and, and parked before he was at. So I wish that we could come to some compromise so we can get this done tonight. You know, one way or another, but really, we would like to say everybody vote yes. I'm a yes man, a hundred fifty percent. We need to go that way because this is for the people. We've got Dibro school right up beside everything. Nobody thinks about school, got kids, but no, if we say no, we turn all that down. So this is all I have to say.
Uh, Ms. Owens? Mr. Hines? Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Um, I hope you all had a great Easter celebrating our wonderful Savior, the death and burial and resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Um, I just want to say as commissioner, though not in your district, most of these, uh, comments I'm going to make, I, I would like to direct them at Dibro community. Um, though I'm not in your district, the vote on this issue that I will make will truly affect every citizen of Warren County. I can't tell you how much I sympathize with your position on this issue. I understand completely your frustration and didn't, you didn't ask for this, but you are forced to deal with it nonetheless. I'm sure myself and every commissioner here have been back and forth, been to community meetings, phone calls and have had sleepless nights over this issue. We have not had enough time to debate, talk to enough citizens and gather all truths and facts on this issue. When I ask questions, I got a lot of, I don't know. As commissioners, we cannot govern on, I don't know. We cannot make decisions on conjecture and speculation, otherwise we can make the wrong decision. We have to know the truths and facts on any issue that comes before us. Here are examples of truth and facts not known. At one community meeting I attended, three closing dates for the purchase of the property in question were mentioned. Also, at this point, it's unclear that a quarry will even open on Roy Foster Road. From what I have been told, if there is a pending contract on that property before four twenty-one, twenty-five, this County Powers Act will not stop the quarry. We have also heard that the pending lawsuits in the Cav and Grundy counties, what we do here could be null and void. But one thing for sure, lawsuits will cost the county real taxpayer money, which means at least cutting budgets. Other counties have passed CPA. In one county in particular, the people complained about it so much that their commission never went further with regulations. So there has to be a better way to do what we need to do here without all this uncertainty and negative impact for our citizens. This County Powers Act may be what you want to prevent industrial businesses from disrupting your lives, but it also can be a negative by regulating what you do on your land down the road. My constituents in my district have called me, unsurprisingly. They also are very sympathetic with the residents who live there in District eleven on Roy Foster Road. They understand why you want the County Powers Act in place, but they are also afraid of the growth of government power and overreach that would occur as a result of having CPA in place. This is the dilemma that all commissioners have to consider in making a decision here. As a commissioner who represents District Five, I have to vote the way the majority of the people in my district want me to.
So, Chris, Ken, Chris?
So one of the, the biggest issues I have is, um, kind of the timing of, of all this. We're, we're stuck in a timeframe. Um, and I know people, we've, we've had commissioners on social media, interviews and I understand all that. With respect to every commissioner, because this is a hard decision, uh, for a lot. Um, I'm, I'm more of a moral person, um, and I'm kind of going to use a word. Commissioner Cole Taylor said something last week that was very important to me when he was responding to an email he got about, uh, something for commissioners to gain. And I don't think there's anything tangible to gain from this, but I will go back to highway to bridge from my grandmother. There's a moral game for me that I can't, I can't always go with something that's going to disrupt the way people, way people live. It's just, I'm just going to bounce with you. Anybody talking, he knows how I stand on this. I do understand too about, um, people's fears, the commissioners down the road. Um, I, we're faced with it right now as a commission, as a court. Um, I cannot allow myself to worry about what commissioners are going to vote for down the road. I'm hoping that the voters of Warren County will vote in good commissioners who will not manipulate a county, a county powers act. But I know for a fact, I've been out where it's also several times. I went out just recently and looked and with the stretch of land and looking at the landfill there, I think about Dibro school. Uh, yes, I'm a social worker by, by career, so I deal with people all the time. This is, this is all I do. Uh, I have kids at Dibro that I've dealt with over, over the years. Um, as hard decisions it's going to be, that's just kind of where my, my heart is. I understand, uh, the issues of all this and that's why I, in respect to any commissioner, it's, it's a hard decision. Um, but I do feel like that as a county commission, when we're faced with something, we, we should try to do the best we can for any group, not just the Dibro area. Um, I, I do have a fear that it could open up floodgates for manipulation later, not the County Powers Act, but the powers that be that wants to put in another rock quarry, whether groomed or not, or, we, we absolutely can. Um, so I, I, you know, I've, I've said, I'm going to vote yes on this as a tool only to try to, to stop this, not anything about, I'm not for, uh, intentionally government overreach. Everybody who knows me know that, but when there's something in place that we have to use and I'm, I'm very critical of myself, there's something that we're missing, I'm missing, but right now, all I've researched is the County's Powers Act is the only thing we can use to stop this. So that's, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had, uh, more debate with my twenty-two-year-old daughter over this than anything that I've uh, come up against and we disagree, that's all I was saying on it. You know, my thing is that it does seem a little rushed. I went out there and looked at, at the area. I've talked to people in that district, uh, I've talked to people in my district and I've got opinions. I really haven't changed my view since I started. Um, it just, to me, I'm looking at three different papers and I know you were trying to help us out, but you know, this is such a critical issue that we're, we're having to be reminded how to make motions and amend motions and things of that nature because this is a critical vote, could be a critical vote. But I feel like anything that has to have a resolution in order to make the resolution right, it worries me and I worry about what I'm doing. And, uh, as I told my daughter when she was arguing for voting no, I said, what if that was our district and it was going to be a, a factory that was going to employ three thousand people at thirty dollars an hour? I would want that factory, uh, to come in myself and I just, and that, that was my land. I don't own but acre and a half, but if I owned enough land and I had somebody, I had us telling me, you can't sell your land for that, that's a problem to me. So that's why I'm a no.
What? Mr. Bass? Uh, Mr. Mark King?
I won't take too much time, um, since I made the motion. Um, it's pretty evident that I'm in support of, of this County Powers Act and, um, one thing that I do want to say is this County Powers Act is a tool, um, just like Chris, it is a tool in our toolkit. A doctor uses a scalpel, uh, to get an end result and this is a tool. Um, I've heard, uh, many people say, we don't want government overreach. There is, um, an excellent commission here. Uh, this commission that we have right now is, uh, by far one of the, the best group of men and women that I know and I don't fear that at all. But I can't, I can't get your conscience to sit here and, and say, well, I'm going to worry about what our next commission is going to do or the next commission, because that next commission has the same authority that we have with the County Powers Act to pick it up and use it for something, you know, even, even worse. Um, I, I think it's, it's our duty to protect our community. Um, and, um, to Mr. Wiltshire's point, um, it would be a little different story if they were talking about a factory, because they're, they're, they're not talking about a factory. Um, they're talking about something much more detrimental to health, uh, and welfare of the people out there. And so for me, this is, this is the use of a tool in order to, to prevent something that is destructive to health, life, safety, uh, of the people around there, to the, the landscape, to the eighteen-hundred cemetery that sits on top of that hill, um, to the veterans that are out in that community and the elderly that are on fixed incomes and the people that have, um, health problems. Um, this is the tool that we use to help protect our community, whether it was Dibro or Centertown or Biola or Erby College. Um, I think this is the tool that we use to be able to, to help that.
Ken?
If I could stress, the biggest point I'd like to stress tonight is every, I feel like, I'm sticking my neck out here, but I feel like every commissioner... like, I'm sticking my neck out here, but I feel like every commissioner, I can speak for them, every commissioner sitting in these seats cares about the Dibble community. And it's a big vote, it's a tough vote, and I've got friends on both sides of that. And I just want the Dibble community to know that no matter how a commissioner votes for you, or the way you look at it, or feel for you, against you, they're voting with the feedback from their district. And as a, you know, that's the obligation we feel is, as commissioners, is the feedback we give from our districts that elected us to be their voice. And it's in no way an insinuation that they don't care about the Dibble community. Thank you.
Mr. Thack?
No, I can't be quiet. Mad as I want to, I can't. Mr. Chairman, thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this. People, I've got to talk with a lot of you in the last, a couple Thursdays ago, and I appreciate the passion, I really do, and I can understand where you stand, and kind of like what Richard Hill said. I have tried to reach out, I feel like I've talked about this so much that I've been talking about it in my sleep. I'm not even kidding. And I know, I've tried to talk with people that are higher on the chain than I am, and tried to get the correct answer, the right answer, making sure we're doing things the right way to do this, because this is very serious. I have sympathy for all of us, but I do feel like we're overstepping in some areas, and I personally wouldn't want nobody telling me what I can and can't do, and I don't want nobody telling my kids what they can and can't do with a farm after I'm gone, dead and gone. And I feel like stepping in and passing this, I feel like we're kind of doing that in a sense. And, you know, I've heard a lot of conversation about school systems being close to the rock quarry. Well, I'm trying to tell facts. There's a rock quarry in Dul, there's a school system right directly across the road from it, not 3,000 or 4,000 yards from it, but right across the road from it. I know they've done a lot of surveys over the county. I think some of the news people went to Highway 8 and done some survey of would you vote for the Powers Act or would you not? And then people that live right around the quarry, in my understanding, it was about a 50-50 vote. I've talked with a lot of people within other districts, within my district. I've got people in my district that this is going to affect to, because I represent the Centertown area. I've talked with a lot of people that are against it, a lot of people that are for it, but the, that are against it, way over outweighs that are for it. And as a commissioner, I'm put here in a position to try to represent my entire district, and right now, everybody that I've talked to, I've had a blue million text messages, phone calls, emails to, from people within my district, and they say, "We don't want this." So that's kind of where I'm at right now. But I do thank you for being here again, and I appreciate y'all showing up to support what you want.
Cam?
I'm looking for the words to say, because at this point, we've been a lot of faces staring us down and, you know, looking for answers. And the truth of it is, I don't think we have the right answer for everyone. That's what's got me tore apart. I literally, I don't know what to do. I sympathize with the people of the areas that we're not just talking about Dibble. I know we keep saying Dibble, but there's some areas in Centertown and Morrison that are being affected along the riverbanks as well. Those areas are what we're talking about as well. And, you know, there's a lot to be said about our community, and, you know, we say that we don't want it to change, we want to keep it the same way, but the truth of it is, everything that we do, it changes, you know? The Amish out in Morrison and Centertown area has changed the landscape of Warren County. And, you know, we have to make choices in this group, and it's painful sometimes. And the one thing I keep hearing though is time. We want more time. And so, I do have an amendment that we'll get to, I think, in a little bit, where I'm going to ask for a little bit more time. When we pass the Act, the Powers Act, and we implement it for a year, and allow people to go, y'all to go vote for it, and I can explain that a little bit during debate. But the truth of it is, is I spoke to a good majority of every commissioner here, and I want y'all to know that we take this to heart. And it is, pulls at your heartstrings whenever a mother calls you and says, "Hey, I'm looking at this piece of ground that they're fixing to start digging on." Or I listen to a friend, a lifelong friend, call up and say, "Hey, his grandkids live on that road." We've taken this into consideration, and I don't know what the answer is. But I am hopeful that we can maybe have a little bit more time and we'll get into that a little bit.
Mr. Rubble?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Commissioner Hilton and most people here said, there has been more debate, more discussion, more sleepless nights over this issue than anything that we have ever undertook in this county. And when I started considering this, I was looking at it from an individual liberty standpoint, and what would I want? And I'm biased, I'm a property owner. Our property is our business. Without property, we're in the nursery business. We don't have a business without property. But I know, as Executive Bell said, we've got a lot of regulations that are on books, but do existing regulations justify more regulations, and do those regulations justify more regulations? But kept researching, kept looking, and I kept thinking, this just doesn't feel really clean. It feels like we have, we have jumped out, you know, the timing, and what I think we all know is, is that there was an individual project that was ensuing in the Dibble community, and we decided to be reactive and implement this County Powers Act to stop a pending agreement between a property owner and a venture business coming in. So I started doing some research, and I've worked on it from a legal standpoint. And talked to Charles Curtis this morning, actually, at Link. And those of you that don't know, Charles used to be our state representative. And Charles actually wrote this legislation, this Powers Relief Act. He wrote it. And I said, "Charles, it's got questionable." I said, "I know this has been, I think since 2006, we've had the opportunity to implement this act, and we have taken no action. But when we found out that a rock quarry was potentially coming into Dibble, we started to raise, to take action." And I said, "Charles, was this the intent?" And Charles' comment was, "This was to be preemptive and proactive for all pending businesses." If we had passed this five, six years ago, with no rock quarries potentially coming into the county," he said, "You would have been cleared." But according to Charles, he said, "If we take this action now, knowing that it is starting, and what they call this is legislative targeting, we are legislating, we are passing law quickly and reactively, not proactively by any means, to prevent somebody from starting a business." And I said, "Charles, do they have legal standing?" He said, "My position is that they would take this to chance record, and they would win for damages and expenses for poor drilling, and contracts, and lawyers, and licensing." And as I talked to our attorney, possibly if they have to relocate because we vote this act out, the expense incurred in relocation and the loss of profits, which could be in the millions. And I'm actually looking at this from protecting the county as well, and I'm the budget finance chair, I may not be next year, and somebody else might be, but our responsibility is to protect the budget for Warren County. Talked to Senator Janice Bowler, she concurred, same thing. She said, "You cannot do this, knowing that somebody is already intending." She said, "You are targeting that business, they've got suit, and they will win." And I don't know if now's the time or not, but I'd like for Mr. Bradshaw to elaborate on that. We had discussion prior to the meeting, and that's where we are. And if we pass this, we're opening ourselves up to suits that we will not win. And, Mr. Chairman, if you want, Mr. Bradshaw to speak now or later, that's all.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Commissioner Rubble, as we discussed earlier, I think you're correct. There is a very large potential for some liability here. What's happening is you're introducing a particular regulation that ejects itself in between a private transaction. Some of the things we've heard tonight are there identifying information about it being on Roy Foster Road, about it being a quarry business. The regulation itself is narrowly tailored to just quarries. Everything seems to indicate that we're doing this for a particular purpose, for a business activity that's already in motion. And as you said, you hit the nail on the head, this is reactive rather than prospective, proactive, because these types of things need to be done very prudently, thoughtfully, over time for future businesses, rather than in response to a business transaction that may well be underway. A good faith plaintiff would have a potential to come in and identify themselves as the person or entity to whom this regulation was targeted to stop from handling their business here. There are certainly some damages that could come from that, and it's certainly something that we would have exposure and liability for. So I, that's my legal opinion, and I do agree that there is a potential here. You never know exactly what will happen in any kind of litigation, or if they bring suit at all, but it's certainly something to be aware of, it's something that could happen, and it's something that we should be cautious of as you take this vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question from Mr. Bradshaw. Not only would we be allowed lawsuits against those companies, but also the property owners that had the property proposed to sell to them.
Potentially. It's very hard to say without knowing detail, and I don't know any of the rumors, you know, I've heard some things, but I just don't know. What I know is that generally, the types of companies that do this work are very large corporations. Most of the time, these types of land transactions happen after there are already option contracts for quite some time ahead of time, to prepare their right to get the land in the event that they need it, and they exercise that option. So it could be the case that they've been ready to do this for quite some time before the word got out to the public. But there's also a potential that landowners could try and pursue actions as well, because they're the other side of that private transaction that this regulation would insert itself into. That's all I've got.
Mr. Mark? Derek?
Thank you.
Well, I'm not too good of a speaker, but I do know about farming. Do y'all know what a gallant spot is in the field? That's when I was growing up, farming with mules. If you had a red hill, they wouldn't have nothing growing, not sage grass, satchel, bush, and that, salt rock. That's a gallant spot. And to have a producing farm, we have to limit those situations. And this rock quarry coming in, I get all your suggestions about all the lawsuits and stuff, it's too high-tech, redneck. We've got to do what's right now, we can't guess what's going to happen in the future. We may not have no future. Today is the only future we got. And I can't see why in the world we wouldn't not, we would want another rock quarry in there. And when you dig a hole in a rock, that job bit's hard to fill up. And all these rock quarries are on sides of rivers, or banks, branches, or stuff. And I just told a man, called me today, he was inspector for the mine company, he said, "You got..." He told me where that angle went and the stuff, he said, "Right now, red waterfall's coming in, and our state parks coming over, it's a lot of red corrosive stuff," and he said, "That's iron where they dug and mined, coming through creeks and the rivers, and getting in the water system." So it's very serious, I'm telling you. And I'll vote yes for this time, I don't, all this other tequila stuff is all right. It comes, so bit, it don't, it'll be all right. I don't think we should need to back down from all these legal casualties. We do, we're in trouble, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll tell you why I look around at this crowd, and I think this is Warren County at its Something lived, told me, he said, "The County Power Act was too much power for the county commission to have." Folks, I had brought up this county commission have this power as corporate, a billion-dollar group, investors. Some have asked why the neighbors don't buy the property. I know a lot of the neighbors out there. A lot of them are retired, they're living on fixed incomes. My mother and stepfather were in this situation the last few years of their life. They never did have good jobs, they didn't draw much money. They, at the end of the month, by the time they paid utilities, insurance, groceries, and most involved medicine, they didn't hardly have anything left. Everything worked, was along, and nothing broke. But I had to help them the last three or four years of their life. They couldn't, these neighbors out there, a lot of them had small children, they couldn't put all their money together and buy hardly nothing. That's awful, say something like that. Let's not cause these folks to live in construction zone the rest of their life. Some of these folks, if you do that to them, you have put them under house arrest for the rest of their life. They won't be able to go outside. I'm looking at it, if this all works out, and you got off the dust, and everything has been discussed, last week at our meeting, there was a lot of discussion about that, how it affects people's health. But anyway, let's don't do that to these people. I and everybody here was elected by people. You were not elected by corporations. Let's choose people over corporate profits. I'm going to vote yes, and nobody here has any more respect for Scott Rubble than I do. He is sharp as a tack in my book. But even when Scott goes around spraying his field close to Howland's, there's a chance that he could get sued over that. There's somebody going to get sued all the time. I've been sued myself. It's not a good feeling. But we don't live in a perfect world. And folks, I'm asking you to vote yes. Thank you.
I represent District 9, and I've only had one person contacting me directly about this. And he said he wanted me to vote no. One person. Then, of course, I decided I needed to go and talk to him, because he told me I needed to go and talk to other residents and call them directly. I'd like to find out several didn't even know what's going on. But the majority of the people that have contacted me by email, telephone calls, have said yes. So I needed to do research, and so I did on my own. I listened to the meeting the other night and saw that, and heard several things comments said that I did research on. So I went and did, tried to find out if this is really a health concern around rock quarries if that happens. And it does. The diseases that were reported are real, and the negative impact on the animals can also be real. The runoff into the streams, I believe it was Mountain Creek that we're talking about that's going through that property, is a real possibility too. So, okay, well, now we know this is really a health problem, and it's an environmental problem. And, of course, the road. The road is definitely not going to be stand-up from quarry trucks running up and down that. It's going to have more trucks on the road, it's going to change your living environment in that particular area. But I am not voting, because your tranquil, beautiful life is going to change. Because my tranquil, beautiful life of 11 acres behind me that was farce is now all gone, and it is going to be a wonderful subdivision, thank the Lord, not a chicken house. Those are the things that I knew that we have to adjust, but to, but the other things are important to me, and I think are certainly important to you. I came in here with such a confident yes tonight until about whenever Scott brought this up tonight, before the meeting, but he is just now getting this information. That's very concerning to me. When the final vote comes in, I still believe I'm going to vote, go ahead with yes, because this one, one property owner that called me and talked with me, talked about being good stewards of our property, and good stewards of our environment. And I believe- And I believe that's what we're being put here for, is to make decisions that are good stewards for Warren County. I don't, I hate that it's happening fast like this, I hate that we're, we weren't proactive a long time ago, but we're being proactive now to do it and do some things for it. This is, Dibble's not the only place that these, that these studies are going on on properties. And we're not telling property owners what they can do with their land, we're telling rock quarries that they have to go to land in certain places that meet certain requirements. So that's, that's how I feel about that. And then I also wanted to tell Stephen, when he and I talked about three weeks ago, I said to him, I just don't feel prepared yet, I feel like I'm rushing it. So I knew then I had to, to do what I needed to do to be prepared, and I am prepared, and I think I got my four minutes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can you explain to some of these people in our commission here, what exactly is it mining? Is it sifting? Is it quarry? It's not gonna be a crusher, but it's gonna be, in my understanding, it's gonna be dug out. This is a particular type of rock that now the state is requiring to go in asphalt. It has to have fifty percent of this particular type of rock to make the asphalt slick, we call it skid resistant, and it holds better, lasts longer, it's a miner. This is a rock that, if the state hadn't made these requirements, we would probably never be hearing about this right now. But as far as a crusher, there's not gonna be any rock crushed in either one of these places, and they have, they have to monitor this, they have guidelines they have to go by, they have restrictions. If they, they get in trouble, just like if we pass this, we're gonna be in trouble with a bunch of lawsuits. And that's what's gonna, if, if they go besides these guidelines, if they've got, probably they're gonna get in trouble. And that's about all I've got to say.
The only thing I will respond to that, that, that's where a lot of our public, and that's where this county commission stands. I can't prove anything. I can't prove the string, I can't prove they're not blasting, I can't prove it's a rock quarry, I can't prove anything.
You just know that the state requires this particular type of rock?
Yes, I do know that, but I don't know even what type of rock it is, nor does it make me actually know it. What I'm saying is, there's no hard concrete facts that we can come up with. That's like talking about us being in a lawsuit over potentially doing something before it comes in, somebody else in here would have to know that it's actually coming in, and that's actually what it is, because I don't. So, Mr. Branch?
I'm the District Eleven Commissioner. I started hearing about this, then Stevie did, probably before anybody else. Emails, texts, Facebook messages, and all that. And I've been asked by my people of the eleventh district to represent them, I was voted in, and they've asked me to vote this in. And I am gonna vote that in, because I respect them, they reached out to me and done that. And the majority of the people that reached out for me told me to vote yes. And like Gary said, our farm land is leaking to big corporations. One day, we're not gonna be able to feed ourselves if we don't put a stop to it. And I think we need to stop it and work out each of that.
I appreciate being last, that way there's no rebuttal. I, I wrote this piece of paper four times tonight, and as everybody was talking, I decided there's no need to say it again. And I don't, I don't agree with what he said, so I'm gonna rebut that, so I got a little scratch from there for, so I'm gonna be scattered, Brandon, I'm gonna read it. The lawsuits, I understand what Scott was saying, he told me about it before. I came in here tonight knowing that whatever happened when we left tonight, there's gonna be somebody gonna sue us, either we passed it or we didn't. But from what I understand on Facebook, that it's just a rumor, that we really don't know, this is what Terry said, we have no proof that there's any rock quarries or, or sifting or anything coming into Warren County, we're just trying to prevent it from coming in in case they decide they want to. And if you read it on Facebooks, it's absolutely the gospel, okay? So we know that's true. Sifting is a word that came up the last few days, I did not think of this, but I had a landlord who called me today that lives in Center Town, and he said sifting is a nice word for strip mining. It's just like adult beverages, it sounds better than rock metal liquor. I've also heard that we have guidelines, I've read that on Facebook. I can tell you, with living next to some chicken houses, that the EPA and TDE, they don't prevent problems, but they will find the people that creates the problems, like, that's how they make their money. The problems happen, then they find them. If they don't fix them, I said, what if they don't fix it? He said, well, find them again. So they don't make them fix it, they just keep finding them until they get tired playing to find them. Like Parline said, I studied the health issues. When I first heard about it, the County Powers Act did me the same way it's done a lot of people, it scared me, I thought, man, we don't need that kind of authority. We're not smart enough to handle that kind of authority. But, I, so I got to studying the health issues, the water contamination and all that stuff. It's, may not be likely, but it's extremely possible, and it has happened. I'm in the twelfth district, an overwhelming majority of people in my district, I have not talked to everyone in my district, but I've talked to a lot of them. I've called some that I respected their opinion. Every single one of them has told me that they want to make vote yes. I'm not talking to anyone that, I've talked to a bunch of people that don't want people telling them how to do their land, but I've not spoken to anyone that wants to live next to a quarry or a, or a strip mine or a rock crusher or anything of that sort. I don't think that we're taking away property rights from landowners. I feel that this is a resolution to protect the rights of adjoining property owners and the surrounding community. I can relate, I can relate to the folks in these areas that think they're gonna get a rock quarry or heard the rumor they were gonna get one. At this point in time, I do not wanna say that I think they're gonna get one. I live twenty-five hundred feet from sixteen chicken houses. A lot of commissioners have told me, when we were fighting chicken houses, and we found out we couldn't, because it's agriculture. I talked with one person that's a farmer, and he related this, he said, chicken houses is actually hijacking agriculture, and they're, they're, they're a corporate operation hiding under the guise of being agriculture. But I live with those chicken houses. Would y'all have voted to help me?
Give everybody a, a chance to call, everybody's had their opportunity. Mr. Chairman, do you have an amendment you're offering, or are we ready to vote?
Yes, I do have an amendment. I would like, I guess my idea, my concept is, and I have talked to the lawyer, I have talked to Susie, our election commission, and the question has been brought up that can we have more time? And so my idea, my concept would be to basically vote in this resolution and put a sunset on it, and make the sunset, and everybody should have a copy of this, and basically make the sunset effective on June of twenty-twenty-six. And that would basically make this resolution go obsolete. Prior to this, there's an election on May the fifth. And on May the fifth, we would be able to put this on a ballot. Now, this is an advisory ballot, this is not a referendum, so basically, and if I misspeak, Miss Susie, you're safe in back there, wave your hand until I misspeak. But basically, this is, this is only the advice of the county, of the voters. It is nothing legal, nothing binding, but basically, we could take a glorified poll of what our county wants us to do. And that's where I'm torn from, because I, I'm hearing half my county, or half of my district saying I want one thing, and half of my district saying another, and so I don't know how to vote in line. But by, by putting this sunset in and allowing the people to speak, that's what y'all are asking for, the people to speak, that would allow us to hear, hear, hear what they say, and then make appropriate action to that. So, with all of that being said, I make the motion that we amend the main motion and add in that this resolution shall automatically expire at midnight on the thirtieth day of June twenty-twenty-six, without further action from the legislative body of Warren County.
Do I hear a second? Just got a second, Mr. Blaine. Any discussion on this amendment? Yes.
Okay, so we'd still vote on this resolution tonight, but adding these words, that on midnight on the thirtieth day of June, does it, what'd you say here, right? But when does, when do, on this May the fifth, do you, you still have, can you explain that, Father?
Sure, I'm being honest. Okay, so on, in May, there's an election, May fifth, and we would put a questionnaire, basically, of do you want regulations on rock crushers, quarries, and mining by utilization of the Powers Act? And the people would vote yes or no, it has to be a yes or no question. And so if they all vote yes, then that, that basically gives us the guidance, that that's their recommendation of what we do. Now, keep in mind, that it is not legally binding, it is just a recommendation. We could, as a body, go in here and decide to do something completely different, but obviously, we would have to answer to the public on that. But at May, on May fifth, you make that election, and then we take their recommendation, and we have basically two months to put it into law. And that's, the, the reason for the expiration is, if we don't do anything, then it expires and goes away. Does that make sense?
Any more discussion? You're voting on the amendments, or you're voting on, I'm gonna sunset this decision out here. Everybody's ready?
We're voting on what now?
We're voting on the amendments.
You're voting on amendments, Stevie, to put the sunset precision on the Powers Act, if it expires.
What about the First Amendment?
He made an amendment to that, Stevie.
This is added to it, you're voting on, the resolution shall automatically expire at midnight on the thirtieth day of June twenty-twenty-six, without further action from the legislative body of Warren County. That's all you're voting on, add that language into the county powers resolution. Anybody else have questions? I don't want everybody to understand what you're voting on, you're just voting on the amendments, to add that. Nobody has, now, last, Miss Lisa Caller-Roll.
Michael Bell?
No.
Charles Bowden?
No.
Bernie Graham?
No.
Jerome Johnson?
No.
Randy England?
No.
Steve Glenn?
No.
Steven Elton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
No.
James Hines?
No.
Scott Kelly?
No.
Ron Lee?
No.
Gary Martin?
No.
Keith Moffitt?
No.
Jim Montgomery?
No.
Casey Owens?
No.
Gary Crager?
No.
Chris Rippey?
This is probably out of order, kind of executive, but can I ask something?
Yes.
We, if this passes tonight, this is our amendment, this passes tonight, this amendment will say that regardless of what happens on the voting next May, that this will expire. So if we pass it tonight, in a year, it's gonna be gone?
Yeah.
No.
Christie Ross?
No.
Scott Ridley?
No.
Don Savage?
No.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
No.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes, because I would be interested in what the majority of Warren County wants.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion fails to amend twenty-one to three. Now, we're back on the original County Powers Act, not amended. We're ready to vote, no one has any more questions. If I have any questions? From the original County Powers Act. I do want the county to kinda come together after this vote, it's gonna be controversial, and the commissioners are voting, they got different people, different districts asking them to vote different ways. So please be respectful of their vote, however it turns out. Our last clerk, Carl Roll.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Charles Bowden?
Yes.
Bernie Graham?
Yes.
Jerome Johnson?
No.
Randy England?
No.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Steven Elton?
No.
Brad Hillis?
No.
James Hines?
No.
Scott Kelly?
No.
Ron Lee?
No.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Keith Moffitt?
Yes.
Jim Montgomery?
No.
Casey Owens?
No.
Gary Crager?
No.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
No.
Scott Ridley?
No.
Don Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Lane Wiltshire?
No.
Anyone want to change their vote?
I failed to mention that, that's my fault, it had to pass by, by two-thirds of the majority of the vote anyway, we did, we only had ten yeses to fourteen no's, so it fails. That means Resolution Number One, County Powers Act, fails. That means number, Resolution Number Two on the docket can't be recognized, because that was the rules for the County Powers Act. We'll move on to item number three, the Hawkins Fire Board. You got the names, though. I lost my name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Warren County A and L Fire Board asked that the following persons be added to the Fire Board this year, Brianna Cook, Randy Roberts, Jacob Weisner, Tessa Turner, Jason Hillis, and this is signed, Rick and Kelsey, President of the Warren County A and L Fire, and I so voted.
We've got a motion, uh, all of the same, by Mr. Harvey, all of the favor of approving the amendments to the Fire Board, say aye?
Aye.
All those votes, passing the unanimous. We'll move on to item number four, Mr. Thomas Savage.
Mr. Chairman, this is an amendment to the H R Handbook, these things come up once a year, and Mr. Brennan met with Austin Personnel on the tent, and we discussed this, and it passed by a vote of five to zero, to send the full motion, and I so move.
Mr. Savage, you have a second, you have a second for Mr. Rippey. Any questions about the amendments to the handbook? They count all of the favor approving the amendments, say aye?
Aye.
All those votes, passing the unanimous. We got engineering contracts.
Yes, and, actually, for engineering contract to be awarded for school system, open design, architectural, all the engineering, simple, OLG, mechanical, pressure brings, roofing, these are multi-year, master service agreements for the school system, but since they're probably multiple years, I would say five, three a year. This recommendation is made by the school board and approved by the management.
Our motion, Mr. Stow, you have a second for Mr. Hollis. Anybody got any questions about the, about the engineering contracts? I'll actually have a roll call on that, because it's all about.
Scott Wilson?
Yes.
Charles Bowden?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerome Johnson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Steven Elton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Keith Moffitt?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens? Gary Crager?
Yes.
Chris Ripley?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ripley?
Yes.
Thomas Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
All right, 23 to zero, item number 5, we'll move on to item number 6.
Mr. Chairman, this is an amendment to general fund, uh, appropriation restricted funds for the legislature master's office to provide hardware or digital storage.
Motion to approve. Second, Mr. Rembling, any questions about the amendment? Any none, I'll ask clerk on the road.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Tony Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Jim Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Crager?
Yes.
Chris Ripley?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ripley?
Yes.
Thomas Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any other one change your vote?
Item number 6 passes 24 to 0, we'll move on to item number 7.
Mr. Chairman, this is an amendment to adjust to, uh, subcategories of the Adware Recovery Program, uh, administered by Brad Price from the county. Both these are grant funded, uh, these amendments have been passed by a grant agency, and they need to reflect it on out.
Motion. Have a motion by Mr. Ripley. Second, any questions about item 7? Any none, I'll ask clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Tony Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Jim Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Crager?
Yes.
Chris Ripley?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ripley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith? Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number 3 passes 23 to 0, item number 8, Mr. Poppy.
Mr. Chairman, this is an amendment for the Animal Control and Adoption Center to transfer 35,000 from motor vehicles into other charges in order to facilitate, uh, some security upgrades and the purchase and mounting of blocks, if it exists in county.
Have a motion, Mr. Wiltshire, second by Mr. Stow. Any questions about this amendment? Any questions? Any none, I'll ask clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Tony Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Jim Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Crager?
Yes.
Chris Ripley?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ripley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number 3 passes 23 to 0, item number 9.
Mr. Chairman, this is an amendment to establish the milling lines and appropriation lines and where the purchased fuel will be used at the fuel islands for the county.
Motion to approve. Second, Mr. Bell, and second by Mr. Dodson. Any questions? This is all we like, getting the money to be ready to go to putting our fuel islands in place. There's no more questions, I'll ask clerk Colerole.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Tony Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Lynn?
Yes.
Stephen Elton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ian Moffitt?
Yes.
Jim Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Crager?
Yes.
Chris Ripley?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ripley?
Yes.
Thomas Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith? Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Item number 9 passes 23 to 0, we'll move on to item number 10, approval of the voters.
This is the list for the numbers. Wendy Cale, Tucker Swatten, Emily Woodley, Michelle Ng, Dwayne Woods, Jay Caleb Graves, Scarrow Yubman, Matt Runn, Kimberly Fountain, Thomas L. Foster, Connie Turner, Christie Talbert, Justin C. Walling, Daryl P. Warner, and Sandra B. Stevens.
Have a motion, Mr. Savage, second by Mr. Johnson.
The third name on the list, can we verify that that's her correct address? Emily Woodley?
I'm curious about that as well, Mr. Poppy.
We have a motion to second, all of the paper approved, and the voters say aye?
Aye.
All of the opposed, okay. All right, we'll move on down to announcements. Mr. Chairman? Everybody, the property assessor, Ms. Beth Martin, wants me to make this announcement. Everybody will be getting a countywide reappraisal, changing notice, will be mailed out this Friday. Every property owner will receive one.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, just a footnote here. As y'all know, I teach the CNC program at the trade school. We are very fortunate to have that at the high school. It's about our fourth or fifth year, hit me up, Mr. Paul, about the fourth or fifth year out there. This year, which was last week, we have been out of the skills competition from the state of Tennessee. It's where all schools come together and compete. And so last week, we are now back into that. And I'm proud to say that in our high school senior, Eli Snyder, he runs our CNC machine at the high school level, three-axis milling machine. He won for the whole state of Tennessee. And he'll get to go to Atlanta at the end of June and compete against somebody from every state in the United States. And then one other thing, Ms. Avery has took all this in tonight, and she said, when can I run for county commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something. Commission, I want to tell you how proud I am tonight of how good of a job we did on deliberating and doing our, and debating and giving our views on this tonight. It was, this ain't even, I don't need that anymore. We done a great job tonight, and whether you voted the same way I did, or the way you voted differently, I want to tell you that I respect each and every one of you. We come here to do county business, and when we walk out that door, we're friends, just like we were when we come in. Tonight, we affected lives, and I know it was very tough, and that way, we affected it both ways. That's tough. I know a lot of you's done a lot of homework, I spoke with a lot of you's about this, and this has been something that's been on all of our minds for three, four weeks now, some of us even more, Michael and Steven. But I just want to tell you how proud I am of this commission, of what we done and the homework we did. And I just, I wanted to say that to y'all, because I know, like Steven said, it pulled at our heartstrings when you got parents sitting out here with their kids, calling you. You got landowners calling you saying, we don't want this. And I'm proud of everybody here, whether you was really, maybe you might not even been for it, but you still voted for it because that's what the people of your district wanted you to do. And that's why I voted for it the way I did, I had more people reach out to me that way. And that's, that's how I felt, and even though I did agree with those people on that stance, I voted for it because of what they wanted me to do. But I just want to tell all of you's, I respect each and every one of you here tonight, and I'm proud of how it all went tonight.
He said, when we leave here, we're all going to be friends, I, who's your friend?
I got an announcement really quick. I want to, I want to kind of tag on what Randy said, because I was also at the Skills USA competition, and I just want to brag on our Warren County, uh, Decap County cohort for the EMT program. Uh, we took home gold, silver, and bronze medals at the Skills USA competition this year in the state of Tennessee.